Don't like my passwords, I don't know. No, don't like it? Like the last one.
Got everybody back?
Everybody's back.
Everybody just stands up on their own? We will call to order the regular city council meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
There you go.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody must have somewhere to be tonight. Right on top of that. All right, can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers, Dederman, Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Dederman.
Thank your honor.
Sorry, make it bigger here too.
Make it a little bigger for me.
There you go, how's that?
Yeah, that's perfect. Approval minutes of regular city council committee of the whole meeting of November 26, 2024, and they'd be approved as a public on December 6, 2024. They'd be adopted as presented?
December 5th.
Oh, December 5th.
Yep.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers, Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns. Yes.
Moving to public hearings, we will convene a public hearing concerning accepting bids and awarding contract for project I dash 2024 Airport Entrance Road. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
We have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? If you're online, star six, we'll unmute you. Doesn't look like anyone's on there. Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Chair of the Airport Commission, would you like to address this public hearing?
And the image in front of you?
Yes. No, this is, this, this is needed, so this will be good. Good project, yeah, Cody Seeley, Chair of the Airport Commission. As long as no one has any objections to the roadway project, I'll vote as normal.
Great info.
And just, and just for everybody, right now, if you drive out to the airport, there used to be a V that you could go on either side, and now there's a fence and people, we've had a couple of people crash.
Yes, we had a car run through.
So, so this, this is gonna have everybody glide this way around on the main road to the airport, and then this will be a secondary access to the house that is sitting there. So that's why the difference, and then this links to Harts Mill Road as well, right there. And it came in, report from Jason, it actually came in.
It's under budget.
Oops, sorry. Came in quite a bit under, so that's good. About eleven and a half under, too.
Anything else for the public hearing? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing, Councilmember Seeley.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for the Airport Entrance Road Project I 2024, and would this be adopted as read?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the resolution? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns. Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning accepting bids and awarding contract for project V dash 2024 Four Square Bathrooms. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
We have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing?
To, I, I would like to say one thing, this was, has been on the radar for up there for, I don't know, the better part of 20 years. And it's really, it's really gonna, it's, it's a nice addition. Nice addition.
I guess I'll talk then, too. Yeah. Yeah, I think there's a need for the restrooms up there. I did talk with Matt quite a bit. I still am curious about the potential of it at the library, I understand the plumbing's on the wrong side of the building, though.
Yeah, it's on the wrong side of the building, I just talked to Susan, it's on the parking lot corner to the left there, right there, instead of being on the other end, which would have been some nice. Yeah, Cody, I know, I think personally, the location that, that they picked out is,
No, the location's.
Is ideal for what the situation that goes on up there, yeah.
I was just thinking about 165,000 and some.
I know, I know.
I don't know if it could be incorporated as part of the library, make some good improvements at the library, too, or maybe some other improvements. I'm not certain it will be feasible. I wouldn't mind having a little time to maybe work with Matt and a couple other people and maybe a contractor to just double check, but I think that's the council's prerogative.
I, I just don't think you're gonna come out of that corner to the other corner.
Yeah, I'm not certain either, but.
You know, that's my biggest thing.
Sometimes assumptions aren't good. I don't know if this.
You're talking about moving a lot of sewer line, a lot of water line, I, I just don't see it.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I wish I could see it, I mean, because that could be used all, all year round, because you have the heat facility, and I love that aspect of it.
I did just call Susie and just to make sure I wasn't putting my foot in my mouth, and, and she's certainly open to discuss options, so that's not out of the question.
Right.
I think it's just, um, the other thing that popped in my head is the backside of the bandshell, because the bandshell needs so much work, I don't know that that would lower the cost, though, but I don't know if the bandshell could be fixed up as part of the project and it'd be a similar cost.
The what now?
The bandshell.
The bandshell's not really that bad, we put a new roof on it.
Fine, it needs some updating, though.
Well, it definitely needs some updating, needs a paint job.
Go ahead.
Mayor Council, Josh Eggers, Parks and Recreation, I'll try to shed some light. So, when Jason and I first initially met, we wanted to rule out options because of how far it would take to run plumbing, sewer, and electrical, this particular area has water to it, the electrical panels are right where they're at, plus optically, it blends into the alleyway, it's not obstructive, it's not intrusive, it also has captive audience capabilities, you got your farmer's market right there with, the farmer's market at least twice a week during the summer times, all the different events that take place up there. If it were behind the library, would anybody see it? I, I don't know, how A D accessible can we make it, there's a lot more modifications, but I think if you were to consider moving it, that's your prerogative, obviously, but I think we strategically picked this place because of how short the distance was from utilities and, and the L B P A, we looked at options with them as well, they agreed that this made the most sense to them as well, so I mean, do with it what you will, but that's, I at least want to have the backdrop of the story that that's how we got to that particular spot, so.
Yep, no, but there's, there's logic behind, behind it for sure, so.
And just on the facade, sake of it, if you look at the, the older library, it would be nice to be able to blend it back in, and that's gonna cost a lot more money.
Yeah, I think the library's at a point where it needs some work done.
No, no, true, but, but if you try to match the current facade and everything, whereas the bathroom's gonna be basically that stone, painted stone.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, the only other thing I wasn't crazy about on the design is it's, you know, the standard concrete block bathroom, I didn't feel like it jived really well with the aesthetics of kind of what's the vibe of that area, right? Go ahead.
Me again. So, that's a great point, and if you look at the, you know, the post office building, it's got a beautiful facade to it with some, some nice painted art, our intention is to this spring, paint the bandshell that same color, and then paint the brick of this bathroom as well, so it almost would tie those color schemes together.
Oh, paint it same.
So that it's not, like a plain brick building, and then this beautiful painted wall, and then like a burgundy, you know, bandshell, so intentions are to paint all that stuff.
Yep.
Light color, so it does kind of actually theme that together.
So, when, what, one of the restrooms winterized and unwinterized?
Typically, middle October, weather permitting, obviously, but they kind of go in priority with what's the, the half twos right away, and then they just work their way around.
And then it'll have automatic locks on it?
Automatic locks, there'll be timer, just like our other park systems, so about a 6:00 a.m. to about sunset daily, that can be programmed to be different times, if there's an event, for example, that they can be kept open longer, it's all programmed in with a little computer program, you plug it right in and set that, so. But it would function like our other bathrooms. I think, too, with, with the library option, I think behind the library, out of sight, out of mind, what other type of clientele does that invite during the overnight? I think with a.
Well, yeah.
On Main Avenue, you got a lot of traffic.
I agree.
Pat will be, you know, monitoring it daily, so.
I, I, yeah, I already called the Mayor of Lyons, just to give him a heads up, sorry.
But no, the, a good point on the aesthetics, but the intention is to pull together a better color scheme.
I, I think the main purpose of this is for the events that are taking place, right?
Correct, captive audience.
That's why, the other thing that popped in my head is, well, though, you can certainly not have it open daily for public use if it's part of that facility. Yeah, I'm just a little torn on this, it's 165,000, you know, and I, I'm uncertain the other option would be viable at all, but I don't know, so that makes it hard for me to, I don't know, do we have, do those bids have to be awarded right now, or can they wait two weeks?
Susie, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out, Susan Mesker, Library Director, that the library building is actually just the Friends Bookstore and a meeting space now, so it's not actually functioning as a circulating library, just wanted to make that known. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Any other discussion for the public hearing?
And just the other part that Councilmember Seeley and I talked about, so on the F Y 24 general obligation bond, we had 145,000. We are looking at the available dollars from doing the driveway out at the airport, because there's gonna be about 11 and a half left over, let's just say 10 for this. So that'd be basically nine, and what Jason was thinking is, because this, he designed this in-house, we didn't have to pay dollars outside, that he might be able to cut down on some of the things that we put on it, still make it look nice, but be able to get in that ballpark and not spend the extra dollars if we need to, so.
And it, when's our next council meeting?
December 19th.
December 19th. Do, does it have to be awarded this one, Matt, or can it be awarded December 19th? Do you know?
I'm looking, I think it has to be tonight.
It doesn't, yeah, I looked, too, it doesn't say.
Tonight?
Yeah.
So it'll be about 1:50 then. So you have it at, Cody, 1:50 instead of 1:60?
We'll be about, I think we could be in the range of 1:55, and then look at that other 9,500, and make some modifications to where we don't take anything away from it, to be able to do, but as Josh mentioned, and talking to Jason, you know, the key things were the plumbing and the, the sewer, because if you guys remember in Clinton Park, we had to run from where it is all the way towards Prince of Peace to Fourth Street.
Yep.
All the way across the park, that's not the case now, it's basically this, it's just a small jaunt.
Did.
Here.
Was any money raised for this? We did make.
I don't think so.
No.
We did make Clinton Park people raise money.
Yeah, the church folks.
Yep.
No, but it kind, it kind of was part of the agreement when the farmer's market was built.
There was, they raised a couple hundred thousand for the farmer's market, didn't they?
Yeah, they did, and one of the things with the farmer's market is, the original concept we, they discussed was actually having a bathroom underneath that, inside, you know, with that.
Yep.
And I don't know at what point, Josh, it, they kind of took a different path, which is fine, but then they said it might be more conducive to have it separate, because then it supports all the different events that are happening, and also can be seen, I think the visibility factor was the key thing, not only when it's being used, but when it's not being used.
Absolutely, a good idea.
Okay, well, I think, but my, it should just be known, my vote isn't because I don't support restroom facilities at Lyons Four Square Park, it's because I have some other things in my head that I'd like to explore, but I think the council's ready to move forward, so I think we should just take a roll call. We're not there yet. Okay.
We're getting closer, though. We are getting closer.
Is there anything else for the public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
Hearing done, we will close the public hearing, Councilmember Dederman.
Okay, are we ready now? Okay, we're ready to go, here we go. A resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for the Lyons Four Square Park Restrooms Project V 2024, I moved that, make this.
Make this happen.
I had it also figured in my head, and I just.
A second. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion on the bathroom Four Square Park? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
No.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Okay, moving to the audience comment section, I did not receive any of the yellow cards, is there any citizens that are here today that would like to address the council on something that's not on the agenda? Doesn't look like anybody's online. All right, we will move on to consent agenda, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, your honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes, your honor, I'll have a couple, I'll give you one second here and I'll.
Yep.
Six H.
Six H for Councilmember Kerns.
Six eight. A C, okay, all right.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, Rhonda took one of them from me already, so. I'm gonna go six I.
Six I.
Six S.
Six S.
And six A C.
A C.
A C is Adam Charles.
All right. Any other discussion items from the consent agenda? All right, can we have roll call on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Councilmember Seeley.
Thank your honor, I'll make a motion, we receive, receive approval and place on file claims listing for 121024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the claims?
Um, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Seeley?
Chief, do you want to come up?
No.
Yeah, I want you to. I just want, okay, so I'm gonna enter this into the record, and it pertains to a claim, but I've already, did everybody read it already? Matt, I had it printed out all nice, ready to go. Do you just want to tell them about the new vehicle?
Yep, purchasing a secondary command vehicle that will replace the current vehicle that I use, that allows us to have two command vehicles at larger scale incidences, often industrial, rail-related, and it also allows us to have a secondary vehicle if we had more than one emergency going on, or large scale, like Dorico, tornadoes, and stuff like that. There was an error in how it was submitted, I submitted the whole purchase request, but only the invoice for the Tahoe, because that's the first phase, and then the second phase is the upfitting of it, and upfitting is basically all the lights and sirens, gadgets that make it an emergency vehicle, make it safe to operate, you know, in the emergency manner. It'll also have a command center that is put in the back of it, so.
And it, how's it funded?
Yep, this is funded through the donations that were obtained through the grant process, these were all donations that were actually obtained for the boathouse, and when I called to return those, the donators wanted to keep the money in the community, as long as it was for a project that benefited the community and the industries that they are part of.
Yep. So, it actually only netted the fire department $2,639.30, the rest was the grants. Yeah, so, yeah, it came together as one claim, but it's, yeah, you got the two things going on, but anyhow, I talked to Matt about this, and then Mike put together information, and I, I thought it was good to have some sort of report, so we'll enter this into the record, and it can be on the next consent agenda, basically, so.
Cool. Thank you.
All right, thank you, chief.
And we may add a little red to it, because it is black, because if we, we had to wait 18 months to get a red.
Oh, yeah, Matt sent me pictures and everything, there's a lot.
So we may, we may have Arcay Graphics or Octagon, you know, put red on the side.
Yeah, so one of my questions, you guys know what's going on, I asked why they bought a black one, because all the fire vehicles are red, so.
And black and white are only available.
Part of the government contract, yeah, so, in really 49,000 for the Tahoe is, I wish I could buy one at that price, so, yeah, yeah. I want to talk about one other claim, and you guys may not want to talk about it, but we had another hoarding situation, and it's at 30,000 right now. We're not done with that, so, I'm not sure what to do, I, obviously, I think we all support what the Humane Society is doing for us, but this, it, it makes me nervous because several of these situations, if we have one tomorrow, we could have well over $100,000 in a very short period of time.
Yes.
Wrapped up in, in cases, so I'm not sure what to do on that, but I think, I brought it up to Matt, I think we ought to start tracking it, and I don't have an answer, but something, it needs to change at some point.
Yeah, and if you look historically, all the ones we've had, the folks that had the hoarding cases did not have any financial means to cover anything at the Humane Society. And so in this particular case, this was the one up on North Third Street, close to Eagle Point Park, but those cats are our bill until they actually then get spated or neutered, and then get adopted out. And so however long that process takes, and we just went through one, and so I looked back, and I talked to Councilmember Kerns as well, I looked back over the last four years, and we've ebbed and flowed, but we've had two years where we had 75,000 additional dollars on top of the $100,000 we're already paying, and so I think one of the conversations, you know, we love the Humane Society, is, you know, we're already paying $100,000, why isn't some of that money going towards defraying the cost of these hoarding cases as well? You know, so, they're getting the $100,000 to do what we need them to do normally, but then we bring in these additional 33 cats, we're getting charged for that as well.
Yeah, and it is an overwhelming situation for them when we have to take 50 cats in there, that's not great, I don't know how many went this time.
Yes, I think it was 33, but then a mama had five babies.
Yep.
And then we get charged.
But, I, I know this was a, I know we talked about it, it's a, it's a touchy subject, right, you're talking about animals, you're talking about the Humane Society, you're talking about public funds, but unfortunately, I think we do need to discuss it here again at some point in the near future to protect the city from basically unlimited liability. Now, I know it's not unlimited millions of dollars, but it's a lot of money, it's also something that's very hard to budget for.
Yeah.
Were, were we not able to come up with an alternative solution last time?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
And so the one thing we did talk about, but not to give away our cards before we go negotiate again, but one of the things we talked about was, we have to have a cap. It, it's just not unlimited, and so, and we need, and I've talked to Jennifer about this, too, but be part of the decision process, and that's a tough process, because no one wants to.
Because you're making the decision to basically euthanize, right, so.
Yeah.
But, that may be a decision that someone has to start making.
But the case before was even worse, because it was, they're all inbred.
Yep.
Not, this one, we actually had a lot more roamers that weren't related, but they didn't have as many medical conditions as well, and really, the interesting thing is, the, the vet bills are the low part.
Yep.
It's the $25 a day that we're being charged to keep that cat there, that quickly adds up.
Yep. Okay, so, that ends my discussion of the claims.
Any other discussion on the claims? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Councilmember Kerns.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution establishing a no parking zone on the south side of 23rd Avenue North between North Second Street and Cleveland Street from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and will be adopted as presented.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
I think we're gonna get it right this time.
Well, I, this has gone back and forth, and I think that, I think Jeff Chapman and, shoot, who was the other? All right, sorry, never mind, anyway, they came up with a good plan to just limit the parking while the business that's in the neighborhood is gonna be active through garbage day, so that the garbage cans will be able to get through, the garbage trucks will be able to get through, hopefully, it's not gonna cause any issue for fire, Jeff did not think it would, so, and this way, the church should have a space for their people to get dropped off, so I think this will suffice, and the church agrees to it as well.
Good. The biggest thing is if the residents get their garbage picked up, that's what the biggest, that's what this whole headache was about, cars are parked there.
But you know what's so, what's so strange is they never complained, not that we heard, until after this whole thing changed, because it's always been no parking on the north side, so I'm glad that they did, if it was causing problems, but it just is a strange.
I don't think you had the traffic until that business started up there, then that increased everything, you know, then that all of a sudden became a problem.
Yes, yes.
Because I think they could move their vehicle, the vehicles, too many vehicles there for them to move their garbage cans, they could move their garbage cans up one parking spot and get picked up, all of a sudden, there's, like, there's no parking, I got no place to put my garbage recycle, so it doesn't get picked up. I think that's where it's really.
Yeah, but I, I think it's good.
Yeah, I think we got it good.
Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, honor, I have a resolution removing previous established no parking zone along the west side of Melrose Court, I move that to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
That's kind of in my neighborhood, I brought this up, and my little issue with this is, you know, we have the throats on Melrose Court, so it's a little bit.
Like where you enter in.
When you enter in on both the bluff side and on the 7th Avenue, south side.
Those get tight.
And those get really tight, I would suggest, and it's something that maybe, you know, we can or cannot decide, but to leave the no parking on that side of the street, on the throats, but then remove it, you know, in the middle where the island is, does that make sense?
You, you mean you just needed no parking here to corner sign?
Yes, no parking here to corner.
I mean, that's common practice, anyway.
And on that, it's not, I, I worry about our fire department, you know, if there's something in there, can they make that turn if there's cars on both sides of the street? I don't, I don't know if we looked at that, I don't know, because I know we talked about it in, in the Traffic Safety Committee meeting when this was first brought up.
So you want to do something a little different than what's on here?
Yeah, the, the, let's see. So we would do, we would do a no parking from here to corner on both the north and south segments of Melrose. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Just, can, can we amend this, or does it, does that have to go to traffic study? I don't know.
I mean, probably wouldn't hurt to be sent back to them with a change if there's a change that wants to be made, but technically, council can do whatever they would like. There we go.
Yeah, I can tell you, I was at that meeting. Uh, none of that discussion happened. It was just brought up that the people that, um, needed the no parking, that had the child, uh, they've moved.
They've moved, yep.
Councilmember Obrin, you're talking about this area here.
Right there.
And then.
And then right there.
This area here.
That kind of takes a lot of houses out, though. You were just talking on the, on the one side.
On the one side, yeah.
So, the west side of the north and south entrances.
You're, you're allowed to park on both sides right now, correct?
No.
No?
Only.
The west side is you can't.
Only on, yeah, the west side, the whole way, you cannot.
Yep.
And where the child was being picked up was that house, um, right across from Melrose Court sign that, it was either that one or the one just north of it. It's one of those two.
So, you want to allow parking?
Oh, allow parking, you know, where.
Aren't, isn't that pretty tight for fire trucks, garbage trucks, all this stuff anyway? Those roads?
They're tight in general when people are parked there, yeah.
Correct. So, why would we, I'm just asking, why would we take away the no parking? Is it causing an issue?
Oh, there we go. That's a nice street scene.
Looks pretty narrow.
Yeah. I mean, before that individual moved to there and the request was made, you know, for the ADA bus pickup, there was parking on both sides of the street.
There was.
The, the whole way.
So, should we just go back to what it was?
But then are we gonna like continue to change back and forth when one situation comes along?
I'm, I'm sure the answer would be yes. Anytime there's an ADA bus.
The Google streetcar got through.
Required, yeah.
Maybe we could ask the fire departments to take a look at it and report back to us.
Should we just delay this two weeks?
Oh, okay, this is before Travis Fink's house.
Yeah, that looks, yeah, that's, I thought the little streetcar's been through again.
And, and basically, the request is just from the one neighbor on that one side that would like to park in front of his house again.
Is it this one or where?
Yeah, down, it's down, uh, in the block where the, or the part of the block where the island is.
Well, they're parked on that side.
But that's an old picture.
Well, it looks fine.
Yeah.
I suppose in the winter it does suck, cause I'm sure snow piles up in the middle.
It does, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I'm okay, I just wanted to bring that up, that.
Sure. And it does, it doesn't matter to me either, either way, but I just, you know, changing for just the sake of change is not, having a solid reason on why we're changing it is more important.
It would be going back to the way it was.
Okay.
And then, and then like I said, my concern is like, so someone moves in on that street and it's like, well, you changed the parking for the last people that were here, now I want you to change it back for me, and then are we gonna be back here changing it again?
Well, but that was for the ADA bus pickup. That's the, that's the reason why we had to change it.
Okay. It's double, the other courts are parking both sides, right?
Yes.
Okay. Are you okay then?
I'm, yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay. I just wanted to bring it up that that was, could be a concern.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
I think it's old picture.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution establishing a public hearing on a proposed amendment to section one fifty-nine dot oh two seven, parentheses B, parentheses three, parentheses A, parentheses one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Clinton, Iowa, pertaining to design features in the LSO Liberty Square overlay zone. Will this resolution be adopted as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I saw the meeting went good.
Yep.
Plant question?
And one of the members was excited apparently that we were doing this, so.
A couple of them, I think, were around when they did it the first time.
Yeah, she must, they, I believe, yeah, she must have liked it when they did it, yeah.
So, just you guys remember, we're basically removing will be constructed of permanent building materials, brick, stone, man-made stone and concrete, and clear glass, replacing that with, shall include exterior materials of commercial quality such as brick, other suitable clay masonry material, stone veneer, granite, cast-in-place concrete panels, finished faced precast concrete, wood only if painted or treated and approved by City Building Department, ceramic tile, directed, uh, decorative concrete block, tinted glass, and metal facades provided a brick facade or veneer is added up to four feet high. And if you guys have been driving along there, the frame is up. It, it is like two and a half, it's tall, so hopefully.
Like six, sixty foot?
Yeah. It, it seems, it seems taller as you're driving, but you're like, whoa.
Wow. Well, it's a basketball court, so it's gotta be.
Maybe they'll put a big sign on that side, so it'll.
I think he's sixty. I don't remember.
It, it looks like it's about two and a half stories.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, any other discussion on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance for a second and third consideration and adopt.
Please read the title.
Yes, I have an ordinance to providing for conveyance of a sixteen-point-five-foot wide by eighty-nine-point-nine-eight-foot-long portion of the north slash south alley in block seven, Elijah Buels addition, range four, adjacent to the north forty feet of lot five and all of lot six.
Second.
I move the council waive the two prior readings requirement of Iowa Code section, I mean the wrong part, okay, three eighty-point-three, and place the ordinance on its final passage for adoption.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for the original ordinance. We also have a motion and a second to waive the two prior reading requirement of Iowa Code section three eighty-point-three. That, to waive the two prior reading requirement, it requires a three-quarter vote of the council. Can we please have a roll call on that motion?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, motion passes to waive the two prior reading requirement of Iowa Code section three eighty-point-three. We have the motion and second on the ordinance for its final passage. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shummers.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance for a second consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance providing for the vacation and conveyance of the twenty-five-hundred block Liberty Avenue and Twenty-Fifth Place from Liberty Avenue to the alley to Archer Daniels Midland Company for seventy-six thousand dollars.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Your Honor, I move the council waive the two prior readings requirement of Iowa Code section three eight zero-point-three, and place the ordinance on its final passage for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the two prior reading requirement of Iowa Code section three eighty-point-three, and place this on its final passage. That requires a three-quarter vote of the entire council. Can we please have roll call on that motion?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Motion passes to waive the two prior reading requirement of Iowa Code section three eighty-point-three. We have the original motion and second for the ordinance. Is there any discussion on this?
I smell rezoning requests soon.
Well, I think we had that on the.
Oh, was it?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, during, so during the planning commission, we actually had.
Yes, that's where I read it.
Yeah. So, we're basically gonna come to you guys on going from C-two to change it to M-two, so it's all.
Okay, it was this, sorry, sorry. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And we did have a member from Union Pacific, so I actually sent a note out to Kelly O'Brien just to let her know that as these UP rail tracks, you know, abut where they're, they're gonna plan to pave eventually, won't interfere with conductors and engineers getting off, getting back on and stuff, so.
All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
I move that the council consider an ordinance for the second consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending chapter.
Yeah.
Oh, an ordinance amending chapter one-three-four-point-zero-one curfew of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Clinton, Iowa. I move that to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shummers.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance for a second consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending chapter one-eleven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Clinton, Iowa, pertaining to cigarette, tobacco, alternative, nicotine, vapor, and device sales permits.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move the council consider an ordinance for this first consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending city code chapters thirty-two, city organizations, commissions, and committees, one-fifty dangerous buildings, one-fifty-four building and housing codes, and one-fifty-five A property maintenance to update references to building and neighborhood services, the Clinton Fire Department, and community development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Uh, unfinished business, we'll start with Councilmember Kearns, six H.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is, um, regarding the gate at Riverstone Crossing, and we got a mail from Bill Wolford. Um, I wrote back to Bill and I told him that I would pull this, um, during council, because I do remember the last time, um, this came up, there was a neighbor that was not very happy, but he could not stay for the meeting. Um, so I told, I told Bill in my email that I believe that if he had the neighbors come forward that were not happy with the gate, that that would be the only way that we could reconsider and take these, take the gate out. Um, I know this gate has created a lot of havoc across the board, and I'm not looking for anybody to make any, you know, pros or cons here. I'm leaving it up to the public like I always try to do. Um, so I would, if, if, I know, Bill, you were gonna pull this one as well, so you might have something to say as well.
No, I, I think this is kind of what we've talked about on other things. This, this thing keeps getting bounced back and forth, and, uh, it seems to always end up causing more challenges than it has resolutions. And if we're having people driving around the gates now, um, now we're creating more problems than we have resolutions.
Yeah, I've been up there a couple of times, and there's big ruts where they're driving around the gate.
By Harry's property? Cause he's not gonna like that.
Other side.
Other side.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll add that I understand there were a lot of people actually that weren't for us passing it the last time. I know the group that wanted us to pass it was here, but the other group didn't represent themselves, so.
Right.
I don't know if this is something we need to revisit again in the near future or not.
I also heard someone took the lock off.
Yeah, somebody.
That true?
Somebody cut it.
I told Bill that I was gonna, and Matt, that I was gonna propose opening this thing up, not removing it. Let's open it for two or three months, and I think we'll realize there's not an issue.
I like that idea.
I tend to agree.
No, I don't.
January, February, March, snow, everything else.
But to me, and I, I know it was a tough decision when you guys had everybody come in and had to decide to put the gate up, and.
Twice.
I was at home watching, I'm sure. Twice, yeah. Yeah, and I didn't enjoy it particularly last time, but the fact is, it's a public road, it's funded with taxpayer dollars from every citizen of Clinton, and my internal instinct tells me it should be open like every other public road in town. Yeah, so, I know change can be hard sometimes, but I don't think the change is what we maybe think it's gonna be, so.
Go ahead. If, if, I, I guess you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if that's the path council wants to take, then we probably need to forward a resolution to the next council meeting if you want to open the gate for a certain amount of time, or however you're gonna do that, or if you wanna have discussion on it, cause I don't believe this item will give you enough to make that action. Am I right, Pat?
No. And.
You're right.
Okay.
Yeah. So, do we think we open it up for three months and, and then follow up on it, or?
We can't make that decision now.
No, I've just, if we're gonna have a draft of resolution, we should, I just thought it'd be a good time to talk about it.
I, I think if we do all of the above, we can at least give the citizens a chance to come out and speak their mind.
Okay.
I would concur.
Okay. So, aim for three months, opening it on that resolution. We'll have it at the next meeting. That's, that meeting's gonna be early, though.
Yeah.
We may, we may need to have that on the first meeting in January, because the last meeting of the year is generally just pay bills and do the claims.
I think if we let the residents know, hey, we're gonna open it up, it's not getting taken out yet, you'll have time to come, give us your comments on how it's going. Hopefully, it won't be a big controversial meeting. I don't, there, there's no harm in seeing what happens here.
Right, that's what I'm saying. To give them the opportunity, people work, the next meeting's at three-thirty.
No, I mean, they'll have three months to test run this before we make an actual decision, right? So, it's.
True.
It's not really the big end of the road, just, end of the road, because of the gate.
Well, then.
I just caution, I just, I caution making that, making that decision to open the gate at a meeting that potentially the citizens can't come to.
No, I agree.
Doesn't work it. So, I think targeting the first meeting in January gives them the opportunity to come and, and, uh.
Then I would add that we put an open date, then it does go open, and then a revisit date, when that date would be to revisit it two months later.
I know we potentially could run into snow before the first meeting in January, but I guess council can do different, if you can do it on the nineteenth if you want to, I know we potentially could run into snow before the first meeting in January, but I guess council can do different, if you can do it on the nineteenth if you want to, that's, that's up to you all. I'm just, uh, the history of this conversation, that's why I.
I think the fact that we're bringing the conversation back up is a great step forward.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So I would just, um, motion that we approve, that we accept Bill's letter.
Okay.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shummers six I.
Yes, sir. I just want to congratulate those that made the captain's promotion list. I know these processes very well myself. They're not very easy, and if you make it that far, you've done a pretty good job. So congratulations to all those on the captain's list, and I would recommend that this be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Six S.
Yes, sir. In six S, there is a, towards the end, there's a statement that, uh, the net project is a decrease. That is not correct. It's actually an increase, so it's, the not should be changed to a net project increase.
Oh, that's a big one.
So I just wanted that to be clarified for approval.
Let's see here. I wonder how I missed that.
Second.
Yeah, if you look up. Authorization was given throughout the construction to increase certain bid items when necessary for the proper construction of the project and thus reconciliation of contracted as built. Yeah, nope, that was, that's the wrong paragraph here. We're looking.
Yeah, you're right. It says increase and then decrease, and it's even, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know how I missed.
Yep.
Yep.
So that needs to be changed?
To increase.
Okay.
Yep, so I just wanted to make sure that was clarified and I have no further questions.
And just for the crew that, we're actually still under budget of this overall project on Thirty-sixth Avenue South at the railroad.
I'd like to make a motion to amend this from not to the word increase.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.